Are you there Christine or have you gone away?
Well, there are two of us.
That's a good sign.
Yep. Last meeting it took me like 10 minutes to get in, so I decided to get in early. Kept messing with me.
Be interesting to see how many of the rate pairs actually participate.
I know, probably none. They didn't last time.
No.
Fine with me. I'm not sure how many people are even seeing the ads now. Of course, they wouldn't look in the paper either. Have you gone south yet? Are you still here?
I'm still here. And we're, every day we talk about the timing of that trip and we canceled Thanksgiving plans, so now we'll, now we'll have to discuss Christmas.
Yeah, I know. We, we were gonna go up to our son and daughter-in-law and granddaughter in Glastonbury, but then I guess the last week, some, one of their staff members in daycare was exposed to somebody that had COVID. So, just to be on the safe side, we're not going.
Yeah.
I won't take a chance. We're gonna go see him maybe, maybe Sunday, because that will have been two weeks and, and they will know. But, yeah, we're not, we're not having big family gatherings. Here comes Jim, here comes Sharon.
Hi Sharon.
Hi Sharon. Hi Jim. You're finding our right set of minutes here now.
Looks like, like Tom is not completely faded into the sunset yet.
No, that was Ted.
There he is.
Hosted, I got a background now. That's a sunset, that's a sunset from a cruise ship balcony where I really want to be right now.
Oh nice. Did we get a separate agenda for the public hearing?
I didn't see one Stan.
Uh, yes, we did.
Was there?
Yep, it was on the, uh, both, she sent both of them out simultaneously.
Oh, okay.
But it's just public hearing.
Oh yeah, I see it now. Is that going to be here tonight?
Supposed to be, as far as I know.
Guess we're gonna start late.
Apparently.
Saw him this afternoon and I made a point of mentioning that I'd talk with you tonight, so he, he, he had a reminder anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, here he comes.
Yeah, here it comes.
Right on.
Okay. We do, we have everybody here. Tony, you set up?
I'm ready to go. It looks like there are one, two, three, four, or five of us at this point.
Uh, anybody from the public?
Six. I see Jim here.
Two people from the public.
Okay, good.
Let me count, one, two, three.
Eric Treister and Damon Lo, looking at the public.
Okay, so.
We don't have to have a quorum for public hearing.
No, you don't have to have a public.
No. I just wanna, whoops. I just wanna see who's here. I need it for the notes.
All right, so let me know when you're ready and I'll call it to order.
All right, just give me like 30 seconds.
That's fine.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to call the Water Pollution Control Authority Public Hearing Water Sewer Rate Increase Meeting, or, uh, to order. It is, uh, 6:32 on November 24th, 2020. I will, the procedure will be, as all public hearings, is that, uh, as we call the public hearing, we'll, uh, make a presentation as to why we're proposing this rate increase. And after the presentation, we will open up the public, uh, we'll open up comments from the public. Uh, it would, it would listen to either for, or against, or neutral. And then after, uh, that, we, any questions the commissioners may have, or any comments? And then I will, uh, if I, no further comments, I will then close the public hearing. So, the first thing I would like to do is share my desktop to show the presentation. There you go. All right, does everybody see it?
Yes.
Good. So, we're proposing an increase, an overall rate increase of 3.5%. Now, why is that? Groton Utilities, as I believe on the 1st of October, has increased, has got approval to raise their raw water rates 5%. Uh, that 5% is water that's delivered to other utilities, including Ledger. The budget impact for a present water purchase, and this is based on budgeted numbers of $445,000 a year of raw water purchase, uh, that 5% is about $22,500 a year. Now, the increase request is a result of, of Groton Utilities upgrading their water treatment plant of $180 million to the state-of-the-art treatment of clean water. The old technology was about 80 years old. Now, there are additional budget impacts. It's not just the water increase. We have, the state has mandated leak tests that we must do. Now, every, I believe it's every three years, uh, this was a, an item that we did not budget for. Uh, and, and ends up being, they check the entire Ledger water system. Uh, and that generally runs around $9,000. So, we need to budget about $3,000 a year for that. We also renegotiated the service contract that Groton Utilities does, and that resulted in an $8,000 increase. Now, if you look at that increase, it was mostly due to, uh, increased postage mailing and stationary cost. Uh, we're not all electronic. Our, our rate, our, our customers are not all electronic, uh, and that does cost money. So, so that is another challenge. So, that's, that, that resulted in about an $8,000 a year increase that we could not absorb. Now, for sewer, we're passing this 3.5% to sewer because, right now, one of our, uh, operators was under their parents' healthcare. And obviously, he's turnover 26, so therefore, we have to pay for that. There's also the fact that they've all, uh, both our operators are going great, accelerated in their training and have gone into class three status. So, there's a salary increase. And we also have some electrical costs. So, this all results in about a $12,000 annual increase in the sewer budget. So, there's the impact. Raw water increase of $22,250, leak test 3,000, service contract 8,000. So, it's a total of about $33,000, 33, 20, 50, or based on our budgeted number, about a 3.5% increase. And the total impact to sewer is about, is about 3.3%, we're gonna round it up to 3.5%. Um, the last increase was 2018, so it's almost gonna be almost three years ago when we get into 2021. That was a 5% increase. Now, the impact of, to our customers of 3.5% is about a dollar a month. The impact to the sewer is about a dollar 41 a month. Or a combined total, if you've got both sewer and water, $2.42 a month. Now, for businesses, the average water is about $4 a month, and for sewers, $5 a month. So, a combined increase for 9.61 a month. So, this is the rate table. It's, that's what has been published. Uh, the only thing in yellow is that we've never published the old minimum and old maximum sewer rate. And I thought I would, I would actually put that, I don't know why we never did that, but I thought I'd put that in there also, just, just as a comparison between the old and the new. The sewer rate factor hasn't changed. So, I'll, I'll leave this up here. Um, so that's the, uh, that's the reason, that's the impact. And, uh, I'll entertain any comments from the public. Go ahead and unmute and state your name and your address. Uh, I don't hear any comments.
This is Eric Treister. I'd like to address the commission.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. Yeah, rate increases are always sort of sad but necessary. Uh, I, I own a, a, a three-bedroom rental home in the Highlands, which is occupied by a, a young family with three children. And they're having a hard time paying their water and sewer bills. And like, like most people, I would like to see those bills as low as possible. A couple of technical issues. Page four of your presentation shows the $3,000 increase for leak detection costs. Um, however, section 4C of the attachment to the operations contract shows that testing for leakage during low usage peri, periods with sonic testing apparatus every two years. And I don't know if that's the same leak detection that, that's on the, um, that's, that's on the, um, PowerPoint presentation, but, but if it is, then there's a duplication. And that $3,000 should not be included as part of the rationale for, for the increase in cost that needs to be covered by the, by the rate increase.
Yeah, that 4C is not, that, what you say, this is something that's mandated by the state for the entire system, not, not sure, that, that's something specific, but, but we're talking about even the 16-inch lines where we found actually a pretty significant leak this year in.
Okay, I, I just wanna make sure that we're not double dipping into that. That, that section 4C looks like it covers everything.
Are you talking about the, uh, budget?
I'm talking about the, uh, the attachment to the operations contract that you signed in, uh, I think it became effective July 1st of 2017 and is still in force.
Yeah, that, well, I'll, I'll, you know, I'm gonna have to get a clarification on that, but that's, we're, that, that's not part of, uh, that, that, that's part of operations, but not part of the state mandate. So, I'll have to, I'll have to get a ver, I have to get a verification of what that, what that particular 4C is.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's worth, it's worth checking.
Right.
And it's not clear. I have, admittedly, it's not crystal clear. It's, it's, but it's, it's, it's 4C in the attachment. Um, so that's, that's a minor thing. Uh, I understand that, that water has to be treated to make it safe and that the infrastructure to acquire, treat, and deliver the water is expensive to build and maintain. And I know that Groton Utilities is a profit-making entity and entitled to a reasonable profit. However, these costs were presumably considered by the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority. And whatever happens, Ledger will have to live with, with that 5% increase in water rates. I do not know if the WPC, if the Dinger PCA is entitled to make a profit. Uh, is, are, are you entitled to make a profit?
No.
Excellent. That's good news. Okay. I also was unable to find out if there's any surplus in the account. And the reason I'm asking that question is, if there is a surplus, perhaps it could be used to have a, a, um, a, a, uh, 1 and 3/4% increase now, and 1 and 3/4% increase in, say, six months, to spread the increase out. Rather than having one big one, we could have two small ones, or may, maybe three small ones, if there's a surplus in the, in the, in the budget to account for that.
So, I, I should point out to you that we actually have, unfortunately, three 5% increases in the next three years.
Oh my.
And so the God, so we, we, so traditionally, what we've done, Eric, is raise it by 15% or not 15%, but let's say 10 and 1/2% to cover that. Under guidance of the Town Council Finance Group with, uh, that Bill Soms is headed, we decided not to do that. We, we're doing exactly what you're saying. We're trying to minimize that impact.
Okay.
So, we could do it by 1 and 3/4, but it's gonna be, it would be almost, you know, we'd have to do this, what, uh, six times? And public hearings do become expensive when you have to put it in the paper and have you, but you're right, we, we could do that. We, we're trying to minimize this impact.
Yeah, you, you might be able to do it with just one public hearing and, and project the, the increase spread out. Uh, eve, even this particular public hearing doesn't specify the actual start date, so you could, you could probably put that into your, 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 uh, your decision-making process, ju, just an idea.
Yeah.
The, um, uh, that, that's, those are my comments on the rate increase. Would it be all right if I addressed you on the, the rate structure, or would you prefer that I not do that?
Uh.
It'll, it'll take about two minutes, three minutes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, the, the, go, go ahead, because I don't think the rate structure is, uh, is not something we're
Right.
we're talking about. It's just the rate increase, but sure, let's hear your comment on the rate structure.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, before you start, Eric, would you, uh, give me your address, please, for the minutes? I need to get that and give me a second, because I have to switch back and forth between screens.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, go ahead, uh, one second here. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Eric Treister, 10, 10 Huntington Way.
Huntington Way?
Yes.
Okay, give me one second. All right, thank you, sir.
Uh, I, I, I'm a strongly believer in, in fairness to the taxpayers and the residents wherever possible. And, and I believe that all, I believe that all residents would be treated in a, a fair and uniform manner. And I'm concerned that the rate structure, together with the 3.5% fee increase, is fundamentally not fair. The, the existing rate structure results in water costing more per gallon for a large family than the water cost per gallon is for a small family, which in my opinion is fundamentally unfair. Uh, in addition, if the water consumed by apartment complexes such as Fox Run is being billed at commercial rates, which I don't know for sure, but I, I'm assuming that Fox Run's is a commercial property. If, if Fox Run's is being billed at commercial rates, then it is also unfair that the water cost per gallon, consumed by people who live in apartments, is more than the cost per gallon for water consumed by people who live in single-family homes. So, that's, that's, that's one of my concerns. The, the, my other concern is that, um, the, the, because the water is so much more expensive for commercial, that it will discourage new commercial ventures in Ledger. And without new commercial ventures, Ledger's tax base will remain stagnant. The, the rate structure plus a 3, 3.5% increase in water rates may, in the long run, cost more in lost tax revenue than it will gain and increase revenue. So, it's just something to think about. I, 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 I don't like, I don't like the rate structure. Uh, and in my opinion, the fee structure should be revised so that everyone pays the same amount per gallon. A, a uniform cost per gallon is fair for all residents, will not discourage new commercial uses, but will be sufficient to continue to encourage conservation. And, and perhaps either today or, or in the future, you can discuss the, the fairness of, of the, of the, of the rate structure. And that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Going once? Go ahead, Bill.
Mr. Chair. I know that we have other citizens here, so I'd like to give them an opportunity to speak, but, um, I, I also would like to respond to Mr. Treister.
Okay, so, uh, I didn't quite get that, Bill. Uh, you were kinda garbled. What, what is it you wanted?
Um, let me say it again. I'm sorry for that. I'm not sure what the sound problem is. Um, I, I would like to respond to Mr. Treister, but I know we also have other residents and ratepayers participating. I'd like to give them a, a chance to speak first.
Yeah, I, 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 I thought I was clear at that. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to open it up to others. Uh, does, does anybody else have any comments? Besides Eric? I don't hear any, Bill. Do you?
No.
All right, so, um, I, I wanna give the commissioners a chance to, to speak on this. Um, you know, Eric brings up some points that, uh, you know, this rate structure has been based on, I believe, what is the industry standard, what Groton Utilities does too. Um, we do discourage, we, we do charge more to, to encourage conservation. That is true. And the commercial rates, um, you know, we do give a break. It goes up to 10,000 gallons, uh, at a fixed cost. Uh, but, you know, again, the, the, the struggle we have, Eric, on this is that we have minimum cost, even if we don't sell a gallon of water. Um, and that minimum cost is significant. It's 2/3 of running the WPCA. The raw water only accounts for a third of the cost. So, you're right. It, it kind of penalizes families that are large, that use a, a large amount of water. Now, I would think that 3,333 gallons a month, um, I believe that's based on a family of four. So, you know, if you have a plant family of six, you're gonna use a little bit more water than that. Um, and the impact is slight. It's, it goes from 0.8967 uh, dollars for 100 gallons to like 0.94. So, we're talking probably 5 cents, 5, 6 cents a gallon more. Um, I, the, the experience I've seen is that I don't see a family of six consuming more than 6,000 gallons a month. If they are, they got a leaky toilet. That's, that's quite a bit of water, unless you're watering your lawn. So, so there is, there is an impact. It, it is something that the Department of Health has wanted, is, is always encouraged us to, to do a rate structure that would conserve water. So, that's kind of the balance we try to do on this. But it's certainly open for discussion.
Uh, one, one possibility. I noticed that Groton has a, for, for their, their standard fee, their minimum fee
Right.
is about half of what Ledger is charging for this minimum fee. And then they charge more per gallon, uh, I'm sorry, they go by cubic feet. But they, they charge more per unit of water than, than Ledger charges for its unit of water. Um, of a lower, a lower standard fee. And I was thinking that maybe, maybe the mathematics should be done so that, um, the fixed costs, the, the fixed costs can be covered by the, by the minimum fee for everybody? And then, what, once the, once the fixed costs have been covered by the minimum fee, then kick into a, a per gallon rate. It's just something to think about.
We actually looked at that, and unfortunately, it brings the minimum cost up to about $40, $45 a month. So, you're right. We, we actually toyed with that. And I guess we got nervous.
I, I can understand that, so.
We got, we got extremely nervous, then we kind of backed off and said, you know, uh, the, the widow who only has herself in the house is already complaining with the $28 a month. You know, we started going into $45 a month. I thought, well, you're gonna hear a lot of people howling. But yeah, this is what we're up against. You're right. You, you put your finger right on it. How do we do this? It's a struggle. We don't have a, a magic wand. We can't, you know, I, it, it becomes a challenge.
Do, do we charge more for, more for water for, are, are, are apartments charged commercial rates or residential rates?
Yeah, the apartments are charged commercial rates.
Yep.
Yeah, they're, they're charging. I don't know how.
There may not be individual metering.
There is, there is no individual metering.
So, that's, that's another issue. I, yeah, and I, I, I think that many of us have wanted to, uh, explore other, uh, rate structures. And I'd invite Eric to, uh, attend meetings with us and, and debate this, but we're, we're off the point of the And I'd invite Eric to attend meetings with us and, and debate this, but we're, we're off the point of the public hearing for tonight and we only have a couple of minutes left. So I'd, I'd like to get back to the, uh, the rate change.
Correct. I mean, Eric did mention that. He did say that the rate structure was, we're, we're really, we, we really were at opening it up. Well, we'll discuss it, but we're, we're more concerned about the three and a half percent. Do any, do the commissioners have any other comments? Bill, do you have any?
I do, but missionaries first.
Don't hear any. Nobody's raising their hand. Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, so, um, so Mr. Treaster asked if, if the WPCA has a surplus and I, I just wanted to respond that for years and years, the WPCA operated at a bare minimum and returned no surplus and also set aside no funds for, for maintenance of the system and the infrastructure. And, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, I know I'm right about the first part. The WPCA does set aside money for maintenance of the infrastructure now. It's much better health financially, um, much more prudent use of resources and funding. But I believe that any, any surplus goes into catching up on, um, the sinking fund, which is to replace infrastructure as it ages. So, so there, there, there is not an opportunity to use the surplus for, for reducing the rate because that's what the WPCA was doing 10 years ago. They were not passing along cost increases from Groton Utilities and they tried to help hold the rates low. And they got in, in significant substantial, uh, financial difficulty as a result.
Right, Bill, and we, we, we don't, we may sometimes have a surplus, uh, Eric, but that goes into the capital sinking fund. We, we have, you know, actually harrowing expenses in the future. I mean, it's going to cost probably a million dollars to paint that tank. And, you know, if we don't put that money away, you, you're going to make the town taxpayers, not the water people, not the water customers pay for that. So we're, you know, any, any surplus and we may get, you know, there may be a banner year because of a drought. More people are using water. The more, the more water they use, we do get, we do get a surplus. But then we have years where it's very wet and nobody's using water. Now we run a deficit. So it's really seasonal. We, we, we up and down. We don't have, we don't have a very constant assured inflow of money. We don't know what the money is going to be from year to year. So it's been a challenge to put any surplus to a rate increase. That's, that's been my thinking anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we're getting close to, if, if there's no other, no other comments, uh, and, and no other objections, I'd like to close the public hearing. And give Tony at least five minutes to work his way into the regular meeting. So we'll have a pause. Don't, don't leave Zoom because it's going to be the same Zoom. We're going to pause for five minutes for the regular meeting. Just hang on, okay? And we'll start up in, in five minutes.
Bill, do we, uh, do we technically need to adjourn this meeting?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so you moved it and Stan seconded it. Thank you.
All right, yeah, so, so those, those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
And those opposed? Hearing none? It's a, it's unanimous? Thank you. All right, so we'll pause until, until Tony tells me he's ready for the regular meeting. Thank you. And I'll stop sharing my. All right, guys, I'm going to just pause for a minute. Thanks, guys. I'm not going to do the regular meeting. You know, I just missed the first part. I know, just. Shorty, guys.
Ed, come back and mute your mic. And unshut your screen.
Yeah, all right, I'm just upset that I can't. It'll take me a while to get, I can't believe I didn't put it in the right place.
Whenever Ed's back, I'm ready to go.
All right, we ready?
Need to share the screen.
Okay, yeah, let me, uh, let me share the.
It's not seven o'clock yet.
Yeah, I'm not going to call the order until I see what's, what am I sharing? Let me stop. What am I? I'm going to find where I am. Oh, here we go. Okay. I don't have seven o'clock yet either. It's 6:59.
Tony, do you need to have, uh, call in user three for your minutes?
I hope that's Ray.
That's, that's Jim Ball maybe.
Jim Ball?
Yeah, I keep losing audio. Hey, I think I have him already. Right, but I, I logged in. I'm trying to log back in again.
Yeah, I'm trying to find out who's. All right, we have Jeremy. Uh, Ray, Ray's on the line too. We also have call in user four. Who's that? All right, well.
Maybe Jim's trying to get back in.
I see Jim. Well, maybe not. You're right. But I have a caller, uh, user three and a call user four, so I don't know. I don't know who that is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm one of those too. Uh, this is Jim Ball.
All right.
I'm trying to get back in. It keeps dropping my audio.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see Manir.
No, Manir wasn't here for the first one and Jim may actually be showing up under two different callers.
All right, so let me call the regular meeting of the water, of the Legerd Water Pollution Control Authority to order. It's a Zoom meeting. Let me do a roll call. Chairman Ed Lynch, uh, our, our recording secretary, Tony Capone, Terry Jones, Jeremy Norris, Sharon Radecki, Stan Huber. I believe Jim Ball is on there. Our town council representative, William Somes. Uh, and we have Ray Valentini. Okay, so.
And Jim is, Jim is appointed as the voting member.
Uh, yes, Jim is, Jim Ball will be a voting member Jim, uh, for Manir Dufick, who's absent. I, I don't know why. He didn't send me an email, so I don't have that. Okay, so the first, uh, ordered business, of course, is are there any residents or property owners out there that would like to speak? On anything? I don't, I don't, is anybody here anything? I don't hear anything. That doesn't mean it's. Okay, hearing none. Let's go on to the next item. Uh, agenda is approval of the minutes for October 27th. Yes, so moved. All right. So I air a second. Are there any omissions, corrections? additions?
Yeah, this is Terry. I think I had a couple of corrections, but now I've got to get my, uh, copy open to find them.
Yeah, I'm sharing it right now. Can you see it?
Not big enough.
Too big enough? Why is that? What am I doing wrong?
No, I mean, it's.
Can you? Wait a minute, let me see. Can I make it bigger? Does that help?
Yep.
Yep, that does help.
Well, wait a minute, let me. How's that? That help?
Yeah, I can read it now, but I can't scroll it. You'll have to scroll it.
I'll scroll it. So I'm on communication correspondence. Um, operation report, we have aged reports, finance. Now, we have the SQUA, which I will talk about in a minute in our operations.
Well, that was one under, uh, under SQUA October report, I think we need a couple more words. There was a pressure reducing valve at Gray Farms Division. Installed, right?
Yeah, installed, I, I'm, I'm assuming. Yeah, I, this was, you're right, this was, uh, this is, the, the reason this isn't on, uh, for old, you know, old business is because this, there's still some information we need on this. And I'll, I'll talk about it when, when Ray, when we get on the operations report.
Just, just insert the word installed, I think there.
Okay, uh, you got that, Tony? Or do you want me to do that?
Yeah, you can do that. And what I'm doing with the minutes is just noting that we're making editorial revisions as opposed to.
Let me make a comment because, all right, installed. Anything else?
Yeah, under, oh, second line under old business, I think DU should be GU.
Oh, yes. Right, correct. Good, good catch. GU, GU. Yeah, I will make that correction. Anything else?
I think that was it.
All right.
Yeah, unless they're substantive, I just note that there are editorial revisions.
Yeah, I'll tell, I'll tell Christina exactly what. Our hearing on, uh, all those, um, in favor of the minutes of 27th of October, 2020 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none? Unanimous? Thank you. All right, the operations report. It's pretty mundane. Other than, than the copper lead thing. Ray, did you find anything out about what SQUA actually did?
They, they haven't done anything yet. What they're waiting for is DPH approval. I contacted, uh, one of the people up there and, uh, what they want to do is to talk about rebuilding, uh, Gray Farm. Uh, by, they have to put a new, uh, tank inside and they also have to do one at a lot of their, uh, stations. So they're looking for that though, but nobody knows, you know, there's no timeframe on it. How much they're going to use. Uh, so what they're going to do is when they take Gray Farm out, why they put the pressure reducing valve in is to run the, the station off, uh, by the, the school. That station there, that pump house, and that's going to feed the whole area. That was one of the connections we did and what they can do is turn on the water at, uh, off of Colonial, uh, well, it's 117 off of that area there. They'll, they'll run that too if they want to turn both stations off. Which I think they're going to do.
So they're doing this because they do, they have to make repairs or they're waiting to get approval for low interest bonds to, to upgrade the system, I guess?
They haven't mentioned that. Right now they put it under repairs for the DPH, uh, to approve. But they're also, uh, you know, I saw the report that they're looking for the bonds. They went, they were hoping DPH came some money, so.
Yeah, and as far as I know, at least from my cherry, that was denied.
Right, so they, they, I, when I was talking to the state, I told them that they had a, they haven't contacted Legerd about how long or what they really want to do. And I know they sent it down to SQUA, the questions. And I haven't received any answers, so obviously I guess you guys didn't either.
Yeah. So, Bill, um, you know, your comments that we need to make with SQUA, I mean, with the DPH is, I don't know, do you think it's premature? I mean, we don't, we don't really know. I don't really know what they're doing. I mean.
I think, I think the main point is, uh, the question was, did they communicate with DPH? Because the interconnection was the DPH's project. And if they're using the interconnection for a different purpose, I, I just think they ought to be communicating with DPH on what they're doing, so. Sounds like there's been some communication and now we're waiting for answers, so that's good.
Right, that's why, we'll just let that go. It's fine. Are there any, um, any other questions for Ray?
I want to ask Ray how they're coming with that Gales Ferry tank.
That is an old business. We will discuss that when we get down to it, okay? You're talking about the Gallup Hill tank, right? What tank are you talking about?
The one that's in their report. They have finalized plans for something in Gales Ferry.
Yeah, that's that, the tank that haven't taken down. It's not, it's not supposed to be Gales Ferry, I see that. But, uh, we're waiting, that's Ga- Gales Ferry tank, which is, I think that's what's called on, uh, the old tank that you had. We made the plans, we sent it up to the, I think you guys are supposed to repair, uh, review it, according to the planner.
Right, we haven't received it yet. That's the Gallup Hill tank.
Right.
I, I've been told, I've, I've seen Steve Banks on Liz, because she is just very straight out busy, so I, we just haven't gotten it yet. She hasn't published it for us to review. So we're, we're waiting for her. And I don't know what we're waiting for, but that's, it's just time, I guess.
If you want, I can send it up to you. Gallup Hill. Yeah, it's not Gales Ferry, it's Gallup Hill, but I, I got that one.
Yeah, I don't, I, you know what, uh, Ray, you can send it up to us. We're, it's just, uh, that might expedite a, a little bit of what's going on. Because what Liz has to do, it, it's part of her job, I guess, is that once we're, you know, the WPCA is, is happy with it, then she's going to go out forbid. So, you know, that's all we're doing is going to review it, make sure, you know, well, I don't know, we'll make sure of it to show the I, the T's are crossed. Our collective wisdom and certainly on a request for a quote. Okay. Aged reports, this is always scary.
Yeah, the September and October numbers are exactly the same. I think there's a error.
Yeah, I saw that too. I, I'll have to, I'll have to, I'm going to have to write a note here. I, I've got to, um, I gotta send a note to Tina. I, I don't know whether that came from Tina or whether that came from our finance. It, it's supposed to come through. It comes through in finance. Although if you take a look at the bottom there, it says cash collected in the month of October was 152, 126, 95. So that 158, 406 is incorrect. It should be 152, 126, 95. And can you see that? Do I need to, do I need to expand that so you can see it?
Well, no, that, that number on the right-hand side, isn't that the sum of the, the data that is to the left? It's the money that's still outstanding.
No, you're right. I think that's the money outstanding and the other one is what we received. That's. No, you're right. I think that's the money outstanding and the other one is what we received. That's correct.
Right, but September and October can't be identical. So one of those is mis.
Yeah, if you look at the 31 to 60, they're all the same numbers. Yeah. There's something wrong with that. Again, I'll have to go with Ian on that one. Okay, I'm not sure, I, you know, they published this. Well, all right, we'll fix that. Um, well, the only thing I, if, if you look at some of the previous, the collections are coming up. But this does bring a question. I just got an email from Tina. And she says, Ed, I think we should start charging for late fees in December. I've not responded to that. She wants my thoughts. I don't know what you think.
These are for people that haven't requested a deferment or have, don't have a payment plan?
Uh, that I have to verify. It could be. Yeah, we've asked for a payment plan, we're not, and, but we, but I, I'll tell you what, uh, Stan, we also said we were suspending all fees, all penalty fees. So whether it's a payment plan or or, you know, whatever, uh, we, we, we told them not to, not to file for penalties, for fees.
Yeah, but we didn't, we didn't decide to do that forever.
No, we didn't.
So that, I think Tina's just raising the question, is it time to start charging or not? And I say, no, it's still too soon.
I tend to agree.
I agree too, especially since the governor may be putting us back a phase soon, especially with, after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I, I'd like. Go ahead.
I'd like to see it, I'd like to see an incentive for people to have uh worked out the payment plan though. I mean, I, I think, from what I gather is that we have people who are intereers but have not taken advantage of our goodwill and set up a payment plan, you know, without paying interest.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, no, there's been no, yeah, what happens is there's been no communication. I mean, that.
Yeah, I'm against that. I, I'm against not charging a late fee if people haven't even made the effort to request a deferment. If they're just not paying their bill.
Right, and I, I agree with a, with there, there should be some kind of a penalty. But we have agreed to not charge late fees if people had made, came in agreement. And I think it's too soon now to change that, but we do need to deal with those people who haven't done, haven't made any arrangements and aren't paying.
Right. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So would it be possible if people entered a payment plan to not assess late fees? And then if someone, if people didn't enter a payment plan, they would then be charged the fees? And could we communicate that to the customers and maybe that would be an incentive to start a payment plan?
Maybe we could send that out in, in the next bill.
Yeah, I think in the first of the year, we, we should plan on doing that.
Yeah, for, well, that's if you send it out in the next bill, it wouldn't happen until the first of the year. It might get people who aren't contacting us to contact us. I mean, I agree with Jeremy that we should charge for people who aren't making the, they should be paying interest. If they're not going to make that step, that phone call, that email or whatever, the letter, they should be charged.
Okay. I, I, I think it's a good idea, I think the rest of the commissioners think it's a good idea. Cause uh I can't tell. You're looking at, I, we, I have to go, so look, if you look at the over 120. Let's see, May, you're seeing it slightly increase and then it's leveling out. Not sure what those, or the dollars would be. It's not a lot of money, guys. It's like only $9,000, but still. See, it was 6,000, it went up to seven. Now it went up to 10,000 in August, but now it dropped a thousand.
There's still quite a bit of money in arrears in all of them. And once somebody's past 30 days, they're supposed to be talking to us about
Right.
Something in this, quite a bit there when you go from 31 to 60 over to 120.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's quite a few ounces, okay.
And if they go too long without, in arrears, without a, without a good reason, they may dig themselves a hole if they have a difficult time paying that bill all at once.
Right, you know, that's why we were looking at payment plans. But eventually, Stan, as you realize, what eventually happens is they, it, they can't pay it and then a lien is put on their property.
Right, but i- if we're not asking for excuses, people who can pay might just not be paying because they're, you know, why pay your bill if you don't have to? But then all of a sudden you have to pay for a year's worth of water all at once, that kind of hurts and they might not be able to pay that.
Right, and we, and we can't operate on liens. I mean, liens are all well and good, but it doesn't help our current year.
Oh, no, no, we, yeah, we'd be in deep trouble. Yeah, be able to pay the bill. It'd be tough to pay the bill on liens. That's right. Okay, so it's not too complicated. It's just simply that people are going to be asked to, if they haven't made a payment plan, to make a payment plan. If they don't make a payment plan after the first of January, they will have to pay penalties. Fees.
Sounds good.
It sounds as about as straightforward as we can make it, okay? All right, let's go to budget. I don't this early in the game, I don't see anything. Uh, I don't see anything that's concerning, cause, and you, you really don't. Let's look at the let's shift by the electrical. Electrical. We have budgeted 35,000, we have available 10, but electrical looks always sketchy. Yes. Is there any, you want me to stop somewhere? All right, uh, water. Waters. I'm assuming with all the water that we're getting, nobody's watering anymore, so I don't think the raw water is going to be that high. Let's see. Yeah, unity actual is looks like it's pretty much spot on. All right. And then to Steve's report. All right, so let me just explain what's going on, because these are going to be some votes we're going to be doing later in the meeting. As you know, sand is put in the absorption beds to protect the beds, the soil underneath from plugging. So you'd rather have this sacrificial sand plug than the ground underneath, because then you'd be digging a big hole. So they, over the years, they, what they do is they grade that, once, once it dries out, they, they kind of get rid of the weeds and try and clean it up and get some of the, some of the stuff that the sand has been filtering. But eventually you run out of sand. I mean, you very, you pushed it all off to the top. So that has to be replaced. And uh the biggest cost for sand is transportation. So they found a big pit, sand pit, which wouldn't surprise anyone in Westerly. Down by the beach. And so, and it has to be the right sand. If, if it's too fine, it'll clog. If it's too coarse, the water will percolate too fast. So it really has to be the right sand and they found the right sand. So it's close by, so we, we can save quite a bit of money on transportation. There's another thing is switching to LED lighting. We'll, we'll talk about that in the new business, but basically you're going to save a boatload of electric, electrical cost by going to LED. And then, um, Eversource is giving, will give, uh, Ledger, the town of Ledger, I think, a $5,000 grant to purchase them. So it reduces the cost significantly. Just other, some other activities. Okay. Oh, yeah, we did have a meeting regarding Ledger Center Development, which I think is on the it should be, is it? Yes, it's in, it's in old business. All right, so let's go to old business, removal of the Gallup Hill tank bunker. You probably already heard from Ray, we don't have the, um, the request for the details, so maybe Ray sends it to us, we'll be able to review it, pre-review it for Liz. If we have any comments, please, uh, please indicate and then we'll consolidate the comments and send it to Liz. There is a meeting, we, we had, we've had, uh, I had a meeting with the engineering group that's doing the request for quote. So let me try to explain this. We're actually paying some upfront money to actually put together the request for quote. This is this is putting the quote together, uh, and it's, um, it's with Pierce. Let's see, who is it? It's with Wright and Pierce. We met with them and uh we have asked for options. So we're looking at various scopes. Not just, there was a misunderstanding. I thought it was just simply Ledger Center on the east side of, uh, 117. And we said, no, we'd like to include all of 117 Ledger Center. We may not include it in the first phase, but, but at least get a cost estimate for the whole project. We are going to have a meeting, I believe, let me look at the calendar, it's December in the mayor's office. Where's my calendar? I believe it's December 8th. We're going to have a meeting with, uh, Wright and Pierce, the engineering group. With Steve and myself and with Peter Gardner, having an outside contractor come in and sit down and we're going to look at this thing and once we're agreed, then we'll submit this request for quote. And of course, what we're quoting is for a design study. And what is it going to cost to do various options and phases? For Ledger Center to waste treatment. I don't have any other business. Any, is there any questions out there? What, just went by, okay. Okay, now we go to new business. Now, uh, Tony, you didn't like this motion. And I agree, there is a, I'm going to get to your the motion as it's played up, um, has the word approved. It's not really approved yet.
It's got to be approved.
Approved. And there was one other recommendation you had.
Uh, yeah, I didn't like, uh, let me, let me, uh, find the motion here. Uh, I've got to jump back to my agenda. It's hard to read.
Let me, let me see that. No, if I can expand.
What I, what I did not like is where it says, um, uh, motion to recommend town council, it should be approved. I noted that a water rate increase, et cetera. To be, become effective January 1st, 2021, depending on town council vote, uh, we're recommending the rate increase as of January 1st, 2021. We're not, we're not recommending it conditionally. Town council is going to be the one that's going to act on it. So I, I wanted that taken out.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, and then the other technical, uh, one, it's hard to see, but at the end of that, uh, so you wanted, want to take out the thing about, uh, depending on town council vote. Because it's not, we're not recommending it depending on town council vote. We're recommending it to town council.
Yeah.
Then decide what to do.
Yeah, that, I think that, that was a side note. I don't know how I got it, to be honest. Yeah, okay, I agree.
And that comes out and then at some, at the end of that phrase someplace, there's a semicolon and it should be a comma. That's just a really technical thing.
Correct. Yeah, so you don't have any problem with as recommended and contained in the water and sewer rate table attached?
Yeah, no, let me, but let me go back to my minutes now, because I need to uh, I need to correct that. So hold, just give me a second here to do that.
Yeah.
And I'll read what the, what I think the motion is. So everybody can agree. Hold on, just doing a little editing here. Uh, all right, so it's going to read if everybody wants to go with this. Motion to recommend town council approve, I need to correct that in the motion. Rate increasing of 3.5% and a sewer rate increase of 3.5% effective January 1st, 2021, as recommended and contained in the water and sewer rate table attached to the WPCA letter dated 11/20, 11/10/20, in accordance with ordinance, et cetera.
I don't think that's still, I don't think it's correct. I think the town council always sets the water rate.
That's true.
Okay, that's right. So the sewer rate comes out of there as well.
Correct, correct. I don't know, that should be out too.
Yeah, because I saw later in the, in the thing, we recommend the sewer rate.
And, uh, actually, when Christina had this, I had to pull that out. I forgot to tell her to get rid of that. It was I told her that there had to be two motions. She had it all under one. So that's it.
And she has the second motion later.
Right, right.
All right, so now it reads, motion to recommend the town council approval water rate increase of 3.5% effective January 1st, 2021, as recommended to contained in the water and sewer rate table attached to the WPCA letter dated 11/10/20 20 in accordance with ordinance, an ordinance establishing waterproof control water authority. Good, sound right.
Yeah, that's good. So that is the motion. Uh, anyone want to second it?
I did.
Oh, you did. So there are any, any discussions? Yeah, now, what about the discussions? Any discussions? You know, we've heard from the public. You know, what, uh this is, this is hard during a pandemic, believe me. You don't like doing rate increases, but you know, I, I, and, and actually it should be noted that as Ray will correct me here, I think our October, that's going to have the new rate increase. Is that correct, Ray? I think we're already paying this.
Yeah, it started October 1st.
Right, right. So we're, we're already paying this rate, guys. It's already, it's already affecting the budget as we speak. We're going to let it go October 1st, uh, November and December. I know that, uh, Eric said, well, you know, we need to do some budget stuff, uh, or, uh, some surplus. Well, we're already spending surplus. Okay, so, so we're, we're, we're spending whatever surplus we have just on these three months alone. So actually the rate payer is getting sort of a break in a way, because we're not, we're not asking to pay, we're not back, back retro this increase. So that's my only comment. Any others? Bill, Bill, do you have any concerns?
No, I, I think you have to do this. As I said, if you, if you don't pass along a cost increase, you get in trouble down the road very quickly. Yeah, and it, it's less than a utilities increase. I think it's reasonable. You've done your homework and you have to do this.
Okay, all right. Any other, any other further discussions before I ask? Anybody out there? No? All right, all those in favor of the motion to recommend, signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Hearing none? All those abstain? Hearing none. It's unanimous. It's passed. Okay, on to the motion to approve payment, uh, the DPH invoice in the amount of $2,565.64 for safe drinking water fee. Now, you know, you know what this fee is, everyone. It's the DPH, and the state has allowed them to charge a, a small fee. It's only for a couple of years. I think this is the last year. And, uh, this is not directly in our budget, so we have to actually approve it. By the way, this was not reflected in the, um, in the rate increase. This is another, another cost that we're involving.
I thought we were passing it a little into the rate payers. As a very, very small 20 cent something on their bill.
That's right, Sharon. You are correct. We are passing this on, this 20 cent per month. That's correct. I forgot. That's right. So that is being passed on. I, I stand corrected. All right, so, uh, is there any discussion? I, I stand corrected. All right. So, uh, is there any discussions on this? I really don't have any choice, uh, which by the way, uh, we've never resolved with squaw. When we tie in with emergency, they don't pay this. They refuse to pay this. And, uh, I think when, uh, Bill, when we're talking to the DPH, one of the things we're going to have to raise with them is, well, you know, when we connect emergency, they also need to pay this fee. Um, which they did not, the last time we did this, they did not pay.
They're not paying it.
Right. And, and it's fair to our rate payers.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is it a per gallon fee?
No, it's a per connection fee.
Yeah.
So if you're connected, the way the state did it was if you're connected to city water, municipal water, they needed, this is a way to get around their budget. They needed additional personnel in the department of health. So they decided to put this fee, it's temporary, by the way. I don't, I don't know how they're going to pay their salaries after this, but, you know.
Both temporary.
Yeah. Yeah. When is anything like this temporary?
But when, when Squaw takes water from us for an emergency, how would you count the number of households? I mean, aren't we paying on the number of households we're actually billing water to?
Yeah, that's why it's a separate billing. That's why they know about it. So we bill for the, yeah, we bill for the water used because that's what the meter is. We have one single meter. But then we get billed for the, the fact that they're tied in.
But are we billed for Squaw one tie-in or for all the people that Squaw is giving water to?
No, just one tie-in.
So it, it's not that big of a, we're not talking much money.
Yeah, I don't know how much it is. I, I, you know, you brought up a, it's complicated to me because wouldn't Squaw have to charge that and pay that to the department of health too?
Yes, they should.
And so, you know, the refusal to pay would be, no, we've already paid it. I mean, that's what I would have thought. So I don't know how that works. Something, you know what? It's something I'll ask Mike Cherry. He's on Rep there. Um, something we'll have to get straightened out. Let's see. I'll communicate to Mike about that. Okay. Uh, any other discussions on this? If not, all those in favor of paying the $2,565.64 for safe drinking water fee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none? Uh, any abstentions? No? Okay, 5-0. Okay. Now we go to the next motion. This is one that we, um, that, that we're empowered to do. So I, I have the motion to approve an increase of three and a half percent of the sewer rate to be effective at the same time the water is approved.
Wouldn't we, but wouldn't we put the January 1st date in there?
Yeah, I'm going to change the emotion, make it a friendly amendment. Motion to approve the increase of three and a half percent of the sewer rate to the, uh, to be effective at January 1st, 2021.
Second.
Okay.
I haven't seconded it.
Oh, sorry.
All right, good. Any other discussions on this? Uh, okay, hearing none, all those have approved, yes.
Yeah, it, it may be unlikely, but what if the town council didn't approve the rate increase?
Well, it, you know, if we approve this, it's going to, then the sewer goes up and the water doesn't.
Right. So you've taken those words out about it being, you just gave the date and not when approved by the town council? Is that what you did?
Correct.
Yeah, that's what the miniature.
Yeah, that, and that's what, you know, that's what will happen. If, if the water doesn't getting approved by the town council, but, but the sewer is already approved by us because that's our, that's our mandate. So that rate ta, that rate table would be changed to reflect an increase of three and a half percent in the sewer.
But we need that rate increase as well.
Yes, we do. I, you know, we got technically almost a $9,000 health bill. Now that, uh, this kid is off his parents' health and, and that's going to be tough to pick up on that present budget. So, yeah, we would need it anyway. All right. Any other discussion on this? And hearing none, I'll, uh, I'll ask for a vote for approving the motion to, to approve an increase in three and a half percent of the sewer rate to be effective at the same, no, to be effective on 1st of January, 2021. All those, um, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? I don't hear any opposed, any, any abstentions? I don't hear any, so it's approved. Okay.
I have a, a follow-up, quick follow-up question.
Sure.
We're doing a 3.5, we're expecting to do 3.5 for the water every year or for multiple years going forward. Is that true also? Going to be true also for the sewer?
Is it? No, not necessarily.
Not necessarily. They don't, they didn't break that. Okay.
Yes. Yeah, that's a good question, Jim. And the water, we're going to be faced with this because they're getting a 5% increase every year. Uh, I think, I don't know. Uh, Ray, I have a question. Did you get approval to do that? Do you have to go back to the pure to, to get approval for the next 5% increase?
Yeah, we, first of all, we don't go to pure because of municipality. We don't have to do that. Uh, but the, the city cop, the Grotten Utilities, uh, Commission, Utility Commission, Council and the Freeman, which are the people voted it in. It's for the next three years.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
All right, Jim. So that kind of answered your question. Yeah, there will be, there will be something we'll be doing next year for water at least.
Yeah, we don't have, but they're, I mean, while we're linking them right now, they, they don't have to be linked with the sewer next year. Yeah.
Right. Right. Correct. Um, and, and it might, uh, it may not have to if, uh, the, these LED lights and all the things kind of save us some money. I don't know. Okay, the next item, before we get to the last two motions, um, has to do with the request for it to be able to drill a well on 150 Gallup Hill Road. Now, I, I did have some discussions with planning and zoning. Um, the problem I'm having personally, since I had been on planning and zoning, is that they have an approved subdivision plan that shows water. Um, I don't think there's any, I mean, if we were the wetland commission, I don't care what commission we are, we don't override um, plans, approved, approved plans, subdivision plans. So there is no, there, there is no, uh, and I'd be honest with you, I don't know how 148 got a well. I mean, that, that's something that I think planning and zoning has to investigate. But I, I did have this guy, um, I believe his name is Don. He, he did text me uh, about whether he had to go to the, this meeting. And I said, you're welcome to come. But I said, you need to get resolved with planning and zoning, your, your plan, your, your approved subdivision plan. It shows water. And, um, you know, that, we don't, we don't take subdivision plans and then do waivers on. That's right. I was trying to explain it to him. I, I think he was a little bit confused, but I, I said, you need to go to, to Liz and the planning, uh, planner and try and work with Nate Woody, the chairman, and try and work out what, what you have to do. Um, and my, my understanding is like, he's going to have to get a waiver.
And I think the resident is with us. Is it Mr. Blodgett? We have a David Blodgett?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, David. I'm sorry, not Don, it's David.
Yes, no problem. Yeah. Well, thanks for, thanks for, uh, certainly looking at this and, um, so, so basically what I've done is I, I went to, um, the zoning department and I'm a little concerned about the, the water line coming in because the, the subdivision had put in a paved driveway that went through the, um, conservation wetlands area and they put a, a culvert underneath the driveway. And I didn't notice that when I put a bid in on this land. And, um, when I found that out, I went to see, uh, Peter Gardner to talk to him about the, the site. And he said, you know that there's, there's a, a water line for this. It's, it's not a well. So, um, he's, uh, I think the zoning department said you got to go to Ledge Light and ask them if you could put a wetland, which I did. And they said, the law says if you're within 200 feet of public water, you have to connect to public water. So, you know, I, I kind of argued with them because if you look at this, the site, the subdivision, although my lot is within 200 feet of the public water, you can't come into the lot because of the, the wetlands. You cannot cross those wetlands. And if you look at the subdivision plan, it shows the water line going down the driveway. So, so really that water line, the path it takes is not within 200 feet of the lot because of the path it takes. It's actually about 500 feet. So they said, well, that, we agree with that, but it's a state law. So you have to fill out what, you can see there's an application well permit exception. They said I'd have to fill that out, which I did. I sent it to the Grotton Water Authority because there's a section in there Public Water Authority. And they are the ones that have presented it to your group. I did not realize it was going to go to this committee. I was just waiting to get that back from Grotton. I would then send it to Ledge Light. They would fill out their part. And then they would send the application to the state.
Yeah. So, okay, a couple of things. Ledge Light is, is incorrect. Uh, the, the regulation in Leger is a thousand feet, not 200. So, so the, that, that is, that is not our regulation. It's planning and zoning's regulation. It's the town's regulation that if you're within a thousand feet. Here's the other problem we have. Your, your plan had to be approved by the wetland commission. You, you can't get a, you can't get a subdivision plan even to the planning and zoning without wetlands. Wetlands has that plan in their files as a water line going across wetlands. So they already approved that. That's already approved to put a water line in there.
Right. Down that share driveway, not, not through my lot, through that share driveway.
That's correct. And if I, if I look at that plot very carefully, I finally got one I could read. That line in only one place, and it doesn't have to be there, is really on the side of the driveway. It's not under the driveway. It's actually like.
Well, the wetlands comes up to the driveway on both sides and there's a culver underneath it. So you'd have to dig up the driveway, dig up the culver to put that line underneath the culver.
Right. Yeah. Unless you borrow it in there. Right. They, they do have, they do have rigs that can actually go underneath without having to dig it up. But, but, but I, you know, so the dilemma we have, I, you know, I'm not really sure. And then, and then the final thing is that we already know Laurie, who's the commissioner of the Department of Health is very reluctant to approve waivers for wells if you're near water. So even if we went through all this, all this thing, there's no assurances that the state will approve that.
Oh, absolutely not. Yeah. This is just one step along the way.
Right. I mean, I.
And, and I guess, you know, my other argument is there's a precedent set. 142, which is no different than 150, has a well and I, and I put, and I attached the well, um, approval. And I talked to, uh, Ledge Light. They have no idea other than it was just approved. There's no notes or anything that says why it was approved. But that lot was approved. There's already a, a precedent set to, to have a well in this subdivision. And 140, 146 also has a well. I, I believe that house is probably there before the subdivision was developed. So.
Yeah, I think.
Pre, yeah, that might've been a, you know, a, a pre, um, subdivision. But 142 has a well.
Right. And I asked the question of planning and zoning, how they got approved for the well, and they couldn't answer me either. As, as a matter of fact, that the mileage that are, that are submitted as, as built are incorrect. You know, you got a well instead of a water line. So, you know, this is, this is like, ah, you know, this is a, to me, I mean, I don't know if the, how the other commissions feel about it, but we're, we're just a utility here. We don't, you know, th, this is, this is a lot of planning and zoning, um, issues, not, not utilities. I, yeah.
That application, I mean, I think at this point, we're just trying to get the application in, right? And that application went to the Grotton Water Authority and they, and I'm not sure why, but they, they brought it to you guys. So I guess they are looking for your yes or no on it. I, I don't, I don't really know what they're looking for.
Yeah, I, I said, I was trying to, trying to explain that to you. They work for us. We, we, we're a contractor. We're, we're the guys that have to deal with it. They, they just do, you know, they're the experts in water, but they actually work for us.
Okay. So then, so then that well permit exception, the section that the public water system is supposed to fill out, is that something that your group is not willing to fill out? Is that, is that where we're at? I mean.
No, it's, I don't know. Well, yeah, my, my problem is I don't know. I, I'm going to have to go to planning and zoning and get some advice. I don't know. Usually this is pretty clear cut. Uh, you, usually when you get an exception, it's because you're thousands of feet away. Uh, you're not violating a rag. Um, you know, but right now, when I, when I went to planning and zoning, they clear, clearly told me that you're within a thousand feet. They weren't even interested in the 200, 500 feet.
Yeah, I, I don't know where that number came from. The Ledge Light told me to, 200 feet. So that's what I was going on.
Right. I mean, this is something I, I, I think we, I, I have to have a discussion with them. I, I need to find out what the best course of action is. I mean, we have, we've had battles with, uh, you believe it or not, there are regions of water that's served by different water companies. And, and that's usually what we battle, but we don't. This particular thing, we don't, this is kind of new to us. We don't usually run into this. So if it's you, I know I hate this, but I, we, I need to get some guidance from the town. Um, you know, I, I can tell you what their preference is going to be. They're going to want you to tie in with water. And I can tell you what the depressed, the, the, what's the, uh, the department of health is going to want. They want you to tie in water. They don't like people digging wells. So, but, you know, given the circumstances, you know, there might be a way to, to, to do this as long as I, you know, planning and zoning is aware of it. You know, I hate us submitting this thing in. And I know they're going to ask the que, I know they're going to ask the question of planning and zoning. Did, did you guys see this? Did you approve this? Um, if I submit it.
Now, who, who would planning and zoning? I had, the, the guy I'd been dealing with was Kyle.
No, this is, this is Liz, um, so planning and zoning. Um, she is, she's, she's a, this is Liz Burdick. She is the town employed planning and zoning, um, director.
Okay. I, I've never spoken to her.
Yeah, you, you have to speak to her. She's in the planning and zoning, uh, bill, uh, she's in the town hall.
Okay.
And, and so, I mean, I've been communicating to her. I, I've been saying, jeez, Liz, you know, I got this. Uh, and I asked her questions. I said, so, so one of the things I did, I look, I tried to look at your plans. I don't even know how you can install a well on your property. There are restrictions on a well next to wetlands.
Yeah, the 100 feet.
Right. Oh, they, actually they've changed that. It's now less. No, I'm sorry. You're right. It is 100 feet. They, they changed it from 50 to 100. That's correct. And then there's the issue of 75 feet away from, um, your septic system. So I noticed in the plan, on your, on your, um, request for, um, for this well, I did not see where the well was going to be installed. There wasn't a well location.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I have met with, with Peter Gardner on it and we've kind of figured out where we would put it, but we haven't come up with a formal plan yet. And, and the only reason we haven't is this, me purchasing the land, I have an approved, you know, I put in a bid and they accepted it with the contingency that I can put in a well. So I didn't want to spend the money with Peter. I first wanted to get approval for the well and then I would go and spend the money with Peter to figure out, you know, where the house would go, where the septic would go, where the well would go.
Yeah. And unfortunately the plan has to have that approval. You have to have, I mean, it doesn't have to be exact, but because of two reasons. One is they don't want your well to be near somebody else's septic within 75 feet. And of course they don't want your well to be within 75 feet of your septic. So, and, and the wetlands. I mean, so you've got, you get all these constraints.
Right. And, and talking to Peter, he didn't see a problem with that. He, he thought we could fit that all in, no problem.
Okay. Yeah, you could probably pencil it in.
And exactly. That's what he said. He said, if you want me to, I could pencil in all of that. You know, because again, we're trying, I'm trying to not be charged for anything before I, if I can't get the well, then I'm going to not purchase the land. So.
Yeah, this is, uh, yeah, this is something that, that planning and zoning needs to, I, I mean, my recommendation is that you, you, you sit down with Liz on this.
Okay.
And this is Terry. Uh, didn't you, when we talked about this earlier, uh,
And this is Terry. Uh, didn't you, when we talked about this earlier, uh, didn't you mention that there was a possibility of coming in with water from another direction from where the old tank was?
Yeah. Why couldn't we serve it from there? I mean, he's within spitting distance of where the tank is now. We've got a water line through the wetlands there already.
You know, do, do we stand, do we have to go across the wetlands to get to his property? I saw.
No, I think the tank is on the far side of the wetlands, if I'm understanding the map right.
Okay. All right.
So we're already through.
Yeah. I mean, I, that, that's a good point, Stan. I saw that and I thought, oh, jeez, this is for two of us. We're gonna go and, we weren't gonna tear up the, the pipe, but we were gonna tear up the tank.
And I also thought there was an exception in the wetland laws for running water lines through wetland.
Yes.
Cause like, for example, our tank in the center of town, they had to trench through wetlands to get to that tank.
That's correct. There, there are, there are exceptions because frankly, what is it gonna do? Contaminate the wetlands with water?
Yeah. And I, and I did mention that to Kyle and, and I said, can I get something from you that says, because in talking with him, he said, you cannot put a water line through that wetland. So I said, well, can I get something in writing from you? He said, no, well, here's an, here's the easement. And that's also an attachment. He said, the, the easement basically states you can't do it.
Yeah, I did see that. I didn't quite understand that myself.
Could we serve him from the, the town's existing property where the water tank is?
The question, to be able to answer that question is what is the town gonna do with that property?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question.
If they're gonna sell it, they would, the, the, the new owner would have to grant an easement.
Correct.
Water. So that, that's possible. I mean, they do it easements for power lines, roads and a water line would certainly be. Yeah. Not, it'd be typical. It wouldn't be atypical.
And I, I did have a question on the cost of the well. I saw the, the drilling report for 142. That well's 500 feet deep. That's gotta be $20,000 plus to drill a well 500 feet deep. That would buy an awful lot of water line.
Yeah. I mean, we're talking, we're talking a two inch plastic PVC pipe for crying out loud.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I, again, you know, I'm just looking at, there's a 500 foot paved driveway and it just shows the well kind of running along the driveway. So, you know, I, I assume they'd have to dig up and replace 500 feet of paved driveway.
I, I actually brought up that to my cherry, one of the planning zoning guys. He said, no, he says, you can put that line right next to the driveway. No, I don't know. And then he did say you could go underneath the culvert, the existing culvert. So, you know, I don't know. Um, like, I'm not gonna pretend to be contracted here, but I think, I, I think for the justification, you would probably have to look at that. I mean, the cost of a well is gotta be 10 grand today. I don't know what the cost of a 500 foot line would be with a ditcher.
Yeah.
Yeah, two inch. I, I don't, I don't know. If not.
Yeah, I have, I have not looked into that cost. I, I, I didn't look at the, uh, well at 142 close enough. I know that I had talked to a welling company and it's 6,400 foot well. Um, didn't realize that that other property had to go 500 feet. So yeah, that, that could be a, a much higher cost than I was anticipating.
Tossed it out, the other option of coming from the area of the tank. I think that's maybe a cheaper option.
Yeah, that would be great. But again, you know, if the town's gonna sell that land. If, you know, I, I guess it would already be in place, right? Because I'm, I'd be putting it in now and I guess you wouldn't be selling the land anytime soon, right?
No, to me, there'd be an easement on the whole property by, by the time the, uh, town decided to sell it and it would just be already there.
Right. Well, that's certainly.
Consider the, the size of the main coming off the main. So that what feeds that tank or what the tank feeds to the main. If that's a larger pipe, like a six inch pipe or larger, um, you could be dealing with stagnant water. That's a concern too.
That, that's an eight inch pipe, Bill, uh, going to that tank. So. But the best way to do that is if you're gonna let them use that pipe, I would just, uh, pull a two inch through the pipe and make a hole and then go through his property. And not use the existing cast iron pipe that's been there for how many years?
Yeah, good.
Yeah. I mean, unless there's a lot of bends, elbows, Ts and other things, valves, that, that should work pretty fit, pretty easily. So. Yeah. I mean, that's a, that's certainly, Stan, I agree. That's a better alternative for him. Cause you know, there would be, there'd be relatively less cost than drilling a well.
And typically when we get these requests for a well, they, they give us a estimate of what it would cost to drill a well vice what it would cost to run the pipe.
Right.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate your time. So I, I guess, uh, if you guys could help me out, what, what would be the next step to, to figure this out?
Well, I, I would think still going, you need to still go to planning and zoning. I don't know if they can help you and all that. The next thing I would do is get some rough estimates of what it would cost. You, you already got an estimate for the well. If you're gonna say three hundred foot well, $6,000, that sounds about right. However, you know, you, um, you might want to talk to well dr- drill that's done wells. For those homes around there. So, so they have more of a realistic cost.
Yeah.
Uh, and then maybe get a cost on, on a pipe and, and the other direction. You know, up the road, but then, yeah, then there's another cost coming down from the tank. And, and we, we certainly would consider, um, supplying you w- water from that, that, that side. Again, I, I would like to have a discussion with the town before we, you know, make a commitment to it.
Okay.
If you, if you want, we can meet you out there too to look at your options, uh, to assist that, to find where that pipe is for the tank and where your property is, if you get a location where you think you're gonna go.
Oh, that'd be great. Appreciate that.
Yeah. The, the lucky thing for you is we weren't gonna disturb that pipe. We're just gonna tear the tank down.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Yeah. We, right, right. We were just leaving that pipe in there.
Yeah, we're gonna plug the ends up and that was it. So.
That was it. So.
So Ray, are you saying that you would just like use it as a conduit to run the, the smaller water line inside of it?
Yeah, because a, a eight inch pipe with just one homeowner ready to, you'll have, uh, coffee water.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't want to do that.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, so I guess I'll, I'll start with Liz Burdick then.
Yes. Yeah, get, get with her because I, I wanna make sure, I mean, I, they may just, just sign off on it. Just say, well, you know, whatever you decide to do and that's fine. And then we'll come up with some technical solution for you.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Well, I appreciate your time.
All right. Good. Thank you. All right. Good. All right. Next item, the LED lights. Um, we'll have a discussion on this motion to approve the capital for light replacement program for all LED lights in the sewer plant. After the WPCA receives $5,000 from EverSource, the total cost will be $6,116.85.
Second.
Second. Okay. A side note on this, this does not have to go for bids. It's under $7,500.
One question.
Yes.
Do we have to wait? Why do we have to wait for the 5,000 from EverSource? We should have enough in capital to pay to do it and just put the 5,000 back into the capital. So we can get it done sooner than later.
Yeah. I don't, what was it? Hmm. Let me just specify this way. Yeah. So let me modify the bid, I mean, the motion. So the motion to approve the cap for light replacement program for all LED lights in the sewer plant are under the EverSource program, LED light replacement program.
With the cost of.
With the cost of, well, now do we, but if we, well, $6,116.85.
And when the $5,000 grant is received from EverSource, it will be returned to the capital.
Yes. I agree to that modification.
Oh, um, that's an interesting point. The, isn't the contract amount gonna be 11,000 and change?
That's exactly what I was worried about here.
That's what I was thinking too.
Yeah, we're getting, yeah, I mean, the net cost would be under the 7,500, but the contract amount's gonna be in excess of that.
Yes, it is.
I have the same question and, and I would say, why wouldn't you go to bid? Because EverSource doesn't have a reputation for having the best deal. The town actually went with another company to do their LED lighting. So it seems to me it would be a good idea to look around. I'm not saying Steve didn't, but if he didn't, we should.
The proposal Ed is for $11,129.85.
Correct. And then.
And that's, that's right.
That calls for bids.
That calls for bids. And the other thing, Bill, is, uh, would the other companies give a $5,000 rebate? They probably won't.
I don't know. But, but you look at the bottom line, what, what does the town save? You go with a vendor that saves you the most. So, yeah, you might get a $5,000 from one, but I, I don't recall the details of Tango Lighting, but we did all the streetlights in town. Um, and we considered multiple, multiple bidders. And they wanted to stay away from EverSource. And I know this isn't EverSource, but they're an EverSource approved vendor.
Yeah, you're right. It's artist energy. Right. It's not, it's not EverSource. It's artist energy that's doing it. Yeah, this is a little bit complicated. Hmm.
But isn't it through the Energy Efficiency Fund? And to do that, I think you have to work through EverSource.
Correct. You won't get the $5,000 from anybody else.
Correct.
This is EverSource giving us the five grand.
Well, it's giving us our own money back. It's like the conservation charge you pay every month.
Right.
So what, what the town did, we purchased our streetlights from EverSource and they didn't want to let them go. It, it took a while, but we, we bought the streetlights. And then you can put up anything you want and save more money. And that's exactly what we did.
Yeah.
But we already own these lights. We already own these lights.
Yeah, we own them. We're getting rid, they're, they're taking, uh, it, it should be clear here. They're taking our old lights back. We're not disposing of ourselves. They're actually, I don't know what they're doing. They're giving us a credit. They're taking all the old lights.
So WPCA owns the lights now?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. These aren't, these aren't streetlights. These are lights inside the plant, right?
Correct. These are outdoor, indoor, all lights.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay. All right.
Yeah. These are all the lights.
Same question. Why, why wouldn't you go out to bid and, and see who's got a better offer? Because if these guys approached us, you have to say, you know, who else is out there? And if Steve has already done the research and looked at companies and chosen this one, that's a different story.
Yeah, I don't know.
Typically to tap into the Energy Efficiency Fund, you have to go through EverSource. I know our church did that a few years ago and you contact EverSource and they only have a couple of vendors that, that they work with. And then, then they come and they, they give you the price. Otherwise you don't get the rebate.
It's, it's worth asking the question. About how, how it goes.
If we don't do it, then we're gonna have to request a waiver from the town council of the purchasing orders.
Correct. Probably because it's a sole source or, or close to it. You probably have to use their.
Which is fine.
What, what's, what's?
Have the answer.
What's, what's bid threshold now? I thought it was 15,000.
Uh, it's, I, it's 7,500. There's a middle number and then there's, you have to get.
Three quotes.
Quote. Yep. Bids are sealed bids, quotes is quotes. And under that, I think you're okay. 7,500, you're okay.
Yeah. But what's, what's, what's the point between 7,500 and what? You only have to get quotes.
I, I can't remember.
I think it's 15,000. I think it's 15,000. And if it's 15,000, we don't have to go out to bid. We have to get quotes.
Ooh. And that's exactly what he did.
I just don't remember.
Well, you're our coun- councilperson. You're supposed to remember.
Jeez. You guys hang right there. I'm gonna go look.
All right. Yeah. Cause we only have one more motion. We're done.
I'll ask Rock Dan.
Well, and, and I mean, this makes a difference because if we, we, we obviously can't approve this motion, even if we need to get quotes. Because we need to get quotes.
Right.
So my, my suggestion is Ed is to just withdraw the motion.
We're gonna withdraw and table it. Okay?
And we'll, we'll take it back up hopefully next month. But first we need to get the answer to my question.
Right.
And then we need, then we will know if we have to go out to bid or have to get quotes or if we want to request a bid waiver.
Okay. So let's just move on. We will table that motion until we understand uh, bids, quotes or waiver. I, I don't know. I, I'm almost sure that Steve, when he talked to me about it, uh, this is what Stan mentioned. It was the energy efficiency. They actually showed him how much money he would save per year in electricity, which was about $5,000 a year. That's astounding.
And you actually save a lot in maintenance because you don't have to replace the LED bulbs like you do the fluorescents.
Right. That's a significant savings, guys, in our cost.
Correct. That's why we want to move on it next month. So we need.
The sooner the better.
Right.
Okay. So done with that. Now, item six is a motion to approve use of capital for replacement of sand in the outside absorption beds. It's a total of 425 tons at $17.45 a ton. That's delivered price. Rawson materials formerly, uh, Terenzia sand and gravel from Westwood will be contracted for the job for the total cost of $7,416.25.
Second.
Yeah, second. Now, this is under $7,500. So I don't think we have to go out for bids. Or I know, I don't know how they worked that out, but I don't want to know. Hey, we're getting something done that we absolutely need to done. And this brings up a question for the discussion. We, we got the motion on the table. I believe this is, you know, we're gonna pay this out of capital funds. To be honest with you guys, this is a legitimate expense. Sa- sand replacement should never be capitalized. I mean, that's my understanding of economics 101. So in the future, we really should be budgeting for this. So if we replace sand every five, 10 years, we need to be putting an, you know, item money away for expenses that we have to pay every five or 10 years.
But then you're making, then you're making a capital when you put the money aside for it.
Well, yeah, but it's truly an operating expense, isn't it?
Well, how much more often do you do it?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. That's what I don't know.
You're only doing it every few years. It's capital.
Well, I didn't think it was a number of years, but okay. All right.
Well, it is, operating expense is something you're gonna oper- use in that operating budget.
Yeah.
Capital is something that you don't do every year.
No, and you don't do this every year unless you.
I, I don't ever remember us doing it. So I think it's been a long time.
It's been a long time. You're right. It has been a very long time and we need to protect those beds. We don't want them to plug. All right. Well, that's just a point. I, I'm, I, I stand corrected. It, it, you're right. We, I don't even how long. And Steve doesn't even remember how long we haven't done it. So it's been a long time. Um, are there any other discussions on this? Okay. Hearing none. All those, uh, in, uh, in favor of approving the motion to use a ca- uh, to replacement of sand from Terenza sand for $7,416.25, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Uh, all those abstaining, hearing none, it's, it's approved. Uh, I don't have any other business, so we can adjourn.
Before you go, it's 15,000.
I was right.
Under 15,000 is quote. Yes, you are.
So what does that mean, Bill? We just get a quote?
You have to get three quotes.
Three quotes. Okay. Thank you. Got it.
So you just have to contact three people and get three quotes.
And move or adjourn?
Yep. Second.
Uh, so move. Okay, guys. Thanks a lot. Take care. Stay safe. Yeah, let's, let's give it guys. Okay.
Thanksgiving, everyone.
Okay. Thank you, honey. She did. She did.